Kind of boycotting this payment thing.
Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. Mr. Slade. Mr. Gaines.
You can just vote from back there. It'll be fine.
I'll go ahead and tell the whole of the November 29th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Bishop, I assume, is in route.
He was in the hallway.
We'll see. Well, finally, we got the call to move forward.
Three oh half.
As always, we get started with a invocation. Mr. Slade, would you be kind enough to get us started this morning?
Yes, glad with it. Father, we're so grateful for, again, the privilege that it is to be before you first and foremost, and then before our fellow citizens as we consider the business of the county, the work of the county. Father, thank you for the privilege and the freedom that we enjoy to be participants in our government. Father, I thank you to these gentlemen, the sacrifices that they make to serve our community. And I pray, Father, that you'll give them wisdom, that you'll help them as we consider these decisions. For they'll be in keeping with your will first and foremost, but, Father, also, they'll be pleasing to you. I pray, Father, that you protect our first responders, the ones who do so much and sacrifice so much in their families. For I pray that you protect them and bring them safe and probably safely.
Please, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Slade. Consideration approval of November 1st minutes.
To move.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Any old business, Ms. Renee?
No, there is none.
All right, we'll move on to new considerations to start. Number eight, please, ma'am.
The first item is a conditional use permit for Monroe Dorman at 499 Parker Road. This property is located on the north side of Parker Road. Mr. Dorman is seeking the conditional use permit to place a 2018 14 by 66 manufactured home on this property. It's a 1.90 acre parcel. It's zoned A2. If approved, this will be the second dwelling. The Dorman's have a house on this property as well. They're wanting the manufactured home to help an elderly friend who needs someone to help care for her daily. This is their site plan. This is the Dorman's home. That's an existing shop. And then the manufactured home will be out here on the front. These are views of that property. That's approximate location of where the home will be placed. This is the Dorman's home, and then these are surrounding properties. Mr. Dorman is here today. If y'all have any questions for him.
I know the situation. I know these people, and this is very legitimate. I'd like to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, to set the public hearing. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Please, ma'am.
All right, the second item is a conditional use permit for Cleveland Brown at 123 McCornell Circle. This property is located on the east side of McCornell Circle, which is off of Andrew Chapel Road. He's seeking the conditional use permit for a 2018 28 by 76 manufactured home that's been placed on this property. It's a 6.66 acre parcel of family land that's zoned RE1. In the past, there was an existing older manufactured home on this property. It's been removed. This is his site plan. It shows the location of where the home has been placed, and it's going in the same location as the older mobile home that was removed. This is a view of the property and the new manufactured home. This old home is on that property as well, and then these are surrounding properties. I believe Mr. Brown is here. If y'all have any questions for him.
Mr. Brown, could you tell us how you got your name?
I don't know.
His name's Cleveland Brown. I make a motion and we approve.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, to set the public hearing for the third. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, Ms. Renee, next.
All right, next is a rezoning request for Ann Benita Nichols at 3962 Highway 468. This property is located on the corner of Highway 468 and Highway 469. It's a 175.14 acre parcel. That's an aerial view of the property. Cedar Ridge subdivision divides that property. This is a view of the zoning map. Part of that property on the west side is zoned A1. She's seeking to rezone the portion on the east side that's zoned R1B to A1. The entire parcel would then be agricultural. The primary use of this property has been agricultural for many years, and it also adjoins A1 zoning to the south. These are views of the property from Highway 469. These are surrounding properties on the 469 side. And this is a view of that property from 468, and then these are the surrounding properties.
And she's going to, if she's successful, we're going to put a stipulation. She can't put mobile homes on the property either. So, and she's good with that. So, I make a motion. We set the hearing for December 3rd.
Second.
Motion by myself. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion, I think that was Mr. Gaines now that y'all say that, but I wasn't watching. Motion carries. Next, Ms.
All right, next is a conditional use permit for Ann Benita Nichols at 3962 A, Highway 468. So, this is the same property that we were talking about on the rezoning. If that rezoning is approved, she's then applying for a conditional use permit to operate a fireworks stand and a Christmas tree lot on this property. And that circle kind of shows the location of where that fireworks stand and Christmas tree lot will be. It's almost directly across from the entrance to Live Oak subdivision. This is their site plan. There's an existing driveway coming in. It's hard for me to even see that, so I know y'all probably can't, but this is the fireworks stand here. He shows some parking on this side, and then the Christmas trees will be to the west. That's the entrance coming into that property on 468, and then these are views of where the fireworks stand will be going. She says the proposed hours of operation would be from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., seven days a week. And then these are the surrounding properties.
What's the state law on the fireworks? When you can open them and when you got to shut them down?
I think it's, well, I brought the file. Let's see. I think it starts December 5th.
Like 30 days.
Yeah, I didn't know it even just they made the comment, Duane or somebody, Renee, one made the comment that you can only do it for so many days that the state law allows you.
Yeah, they regulate the time they can be open, and I've got a note on that.
I wonder why that is? I mean, you're around.
I believe it's 15 days.
People shoot them year-round. It's supposed to be subdivision's plus about shooting. I mean, in the county, I mean, in the county.
And especially because of the dry season, you know, in the summertime and the fall.
I mean, you get complaints. You get complaints on those people shooting.
Hey, Craig, can you tell me, refresh my memory. Why did we change our ordinance on fireworks a few months ago?
We shortened the distance between the facility to sell the fireworks and what we classify as a fire hazard. So, a gas station, a hay barn, those would be two examples. We shortened it from 2,000 feet of separation to a quarter mile, which is 1,320.
And the two that we have currently, or three maybe, that we have currently in operation, don't qualify, right?
Two with the one in our area?
Yeah.
That's one in my area.
One in your area, one in mine, and another one in mine. Yeah.
The one that falls in mine, well, yeah, the one that falls in mine off Grand Spirit is in the city.
Right.
To the city flow. So.
Why did we lower it? I would think, beginning, we made it further away.
More, being like every other county around us, I think, was a quarter mile.
Is that what it was? I don't remember.
There's still plenty of.
It ain't sitting on top of one like the others.
No.
I think the feeling was the 2,000 was overregulating. So, moving it back down to a quarter mile makes sense.
Yeah.
And we got exactly.
I don't even remember us doing it. Honestly.
We talked about it for a month.
I get my memories.
I found the state law. It says that they can't be offered for sale before the 5th day of December and after the 2nd day of January of each year.
What about July 4th, Renee?
It says before the 15th day of June and after the 5th day of July.
Okay, so, there's two windows there, or each.
Seasons.
I make a motion. We set the public hearing for December 3rd. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, Ms. Renee, anything of the new considerations? Anything on site plan and architectural review?
No, sir.
All right, Mr. Slade, looks like you're heading up.
Under nuisance property hearings, the first item is the Wanda Gale Buford Estate nuisance property at 923 Shannon Lee Drive. That's a District 3 property. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate.
All right, we received a complaint here about an uninhabitable mobile home, rubbish and debris, weeds and grass, leaving somebody living in this with no power or water. That complaint came in on, or we sent our first letter on August 13th of 2018. It shows it was received September 10th. These are pictures that were taken on the 6th of November showing the condition of the property. We've gotten multiple complaints on this throughout the years.
She supposedly puts a generator. She has a little generator out there. She, she's.
And these are the new pictures that were taken on Tuesday. There hasn't been any change.
We've placed two condemned signs. Try to keep them out where the sheriff's department, they carry the signs down and they just.
Is there anyone here on the Wanda Gale Buford Estate nuisance matter? Anyone? Okay, this is one of our classic situations.
Close the hearing?
Yep, not just yet. I want to keep, just in case somebody walks in while we're talking about this. The situation that we face here is it's an estate proceeding. Renee, who have we notified, and what information do we have about who has received our notices?
It may take me a minute to find that. Okay, so. Okay, well. So.
I put Renee on the spot. She wasn't expecting me to ask this question, but.
It looks like it was delivered to the original sender, so that means it came back to us.
Yeah.
So, it was not claimed. The mail was not claimed. We sent it to the Wanda Gale Buford Estate at that address because that's, you know, all we had.
Okay.
And she has, we know she's been occupying it. The daughter.
Yes, the daughter. Okay, so we think we have somebody that would be an heir, maybe, or a claimant under the estate of the decedent owner. But the problem is that we don't, technically, we don't have a defendant or a party that can be identified so that we can get process on them. So, I mentioned that to simply say that when we find ourselves in these estate situations, we get limited in what we can do to remedy the situation. It's fine for us to declare the nuisance, ask Renee to take it up to Justice Court, but the problem is there won't be a person over whom the court can acquire jurisdiction, personal jurisdiction, and assert some sort of violation. And fine, too. It's in an estate. There's nobody there. So, you're limited in how we can clear up this situation. You have the option to declare the nuisance and then go about the process of having the county clean it up and impress a lien on the property. That is probably your only option in estate nuisance situations.
How many acres is involved?
There's a lot. Lot 45, shade. It shows that Sandy Franklin Buford has been paying the taxes. I don't know if that helps.
I'm going to make the motion. We pursue the thing. I'm not making the motion that we clean it up. I do that. She has been seen out there supposedly, you know, and resides out there in the trailer that needs to be technically abandoned, not abandoned, but declared a health hazard, whatever you want to call it.
So, what we want to do is to make sure that when we refer this matter up to Justice Court, that it's very clear that we are asking the court to pursue the daughter, that she is attempting to inhabit what has been posted as a condemned dwelling. That's a different deal.
She's trying to live in it?
Yes.
She has been living in it.
Yeah, so that's a different deal. That's actually outside the nuisance consideration, although this is all tied together. But her attempt to occupy a dwelling that has been condemned by county, by the county, is a violation in and of itself, and that's what should be pursued. Hopefully, we will avoid this whole, we've been advised from upstairs, don't send us estate nuisance considerations.
So, is that her car? She's, it's there?
Well, it's one of the people that she associates with.
So, that would be my recommendation. The purposes of the nuisance hearing, we want to simply close the nuisance hearing.
Shake them out of the cage.
Wait a minute, you kind of contradict yourself there. You said we got a clear message from upstairs not to send them.
Yeah, we're not sending them a nuisance matter, Jay. We're going to ask Renee to refer the occupancy of a condemned dwelling matter to Justice Court because that involves the lady. Okay? Not the estate. She's the one who is violating our regulation with respect to the occupancy of that dwelling. So, I would simply acknowledge that we are closing that public hearing. And Renee, well, you can make a motion, Bob, if you're interested, that Renee should refer the occupancy of the condemned dwelling to Justice Court and ask the court to pursue that.
Is that in Robin Hood?
Yes.
Just curious.
Second.
Motion by myself. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Slade.
All right, this is District 3, Jerry McCoy, nuisance property 201, Robin Hood Trail. I'll ask, we'll open the public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the slides.
All right, so we got a report about an abandoned home with weeds and grass. We sent our first letter August 27th. It was delivered September 21st. These pictures were taken July the 30th. And then these were, these right here are the 6th of November.
Are those all the same house?
They are.
The building's flipped, wasn't it?
There is a little leak there.
And then these were taken on the 27th. The grass has been cut and the house has been boarded up. I think Mr. McCoy may be here today.
Was there a lake behind it?
That's Robin Hood Lake.
Really? Oh, it's Robin Hood also.
Mr. McCoy, give him four, please. Thank you. Give us your name and address.
Jerry McCoy. My permit address is 114 West Goffew Drive. And I apologize for not doing it in a prompt time, but I have it boarded up, and the grass is cut, and I have a man that says he's wanting to buy it as we speak.
Do you have any kind of, as you say, when he, let me ask you this question. Do you think they give you 90 days to kind of, you know, kind of flush this out one way or another, not get us through the holidays, all that kind of good stuff?
Yes, and he, as I say, he is trying to come up with the money, and he says he's going to rebuild it, you know? And I saw like him, it's like.
We should look at it. Is that all right with you, Mr. Jones? Go ahead and continue this for 90 days, and I'll see where she plans it up. Mr. Slade, does that work for you?
Yes, it does.
Mr. McCoy, we appreciate you coming up here today. Okay, thank y'all. Have a good day.
Rebuild it. He's going to have a permit. We're going to have to go through it. Oh, yeah.
For the record, Mr. Morris, we'll close that public hearing. I think your motion is to table this matter for 90 days to see if we can get a sale. And move forward from there. That is my motion. All right.
Motion by myself. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Okay, very good, thanks. Lawrence and Marlene Johnson, nuisance property 592 Jerusalem Church Road. This is District 3. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate.
All right, we received a complaint about weeds and grass. Our first letter was sent in July. It shows it was delivered August 6th. We haven't heard from them at all. These pictures were taken July the 2nd. And then these were the pictures from Tuesday of this week. There hasn't been any change.
That public hearing is open. I'll ask if there is, if Lawrence or Marlene Johnson are present. Anyone speaking on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that particular matter. We'll close that public hearing at this time.
I make a motion. We declare the public nuisance. Motion by myself. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Slade.
Item D is Carley and Brandon Moore, nuisance property 124 Tiffany Drive. This is District 4 property. I'll ask, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee if she doesn't mind.
All right, so we received a complaint about weeds and grass. Our first letter was sent October 12th. These pictures were taken September 18th. We've received complaints on this property in the past. We haven't heard from anybody. And there hadn't been a change. And this is in Evergreen Estates.
I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak for Carley and Brandon Moore. Come forward, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
Carley Moore, 124 Tiffany Drive, Brandon, and what else did you need me to say? Just address it? Okay.
I think the board would like to hear what the situation is.
This is our fifth summer to live here, and it's the first summer that we weren't able to maintain our yard. We have a riding lawn mower that broke, and my husband, his work and some previous medical conditions has made him vulnerable to, like, heat, problems with the heat. And she, she had mentioned that there were previous complaints on it, but we didn't hear anything until I got this letter dated November 6th. It's the first thing that we heard of it. And it states certified mail on July 18th, which we would have paid someone to come clean up the yard, but we kind of, I don't know, I guess in September or so, we decided, oh, we'll let the winter deal with it and then, you know, make sure we get back on top of it next summer or next spring, you know, when it needs it again. So, I mean, it's very embarrassing certainly, but it's not, I don't know why there would be previous complaints.
How big a yard is it? I mean, how big is that?
I think we live on about, we live on about an acre, I think, or maybe less than an acre.
Is that Evergreen?
What do you have, Renee?
I'm sorry.
What do you have as far as previous?
Yeah, there was a note in the file that said that, the caller said they had called before and complained, and that usually, once they complain, they get the grass cut, but then it just reverts back. Several complaints have been made before, and every time at the last minute, they cut the grass, but then they let it get bad again. She says that they've had several problems with the, well, with, it says with a new person who moved in now not wanting to cut the grass.
How long have you lived there?
We moved in August of '14, and this is the first thing we've heard anything about our yard. We have small children that like to play in the yard. I know it's kind of not a great year for it, but, I mean, it's not normal. It's a typical for us.
Well, I think you need to get it cut. If the county does, then you're going to pay for it, so, and it's going to be more than probably you could hire somebody to cut it for.
Right, and we would, we will get it done. Like I said, if we'd gotten this letter in July, we would have paid somebody to do it then, if my, you know, we could get the lawnmower that we do have.
Did the certified receipt come back to us, unsigned or something?
Unclaimed is what this says on the notice.
You're sending certified and regular. Okay.
If you don't, you know, you don't go and get it pretty quick. It's going to get too wet. It's going to be hard to cut. Then you're going to get more complaints. And, you know, if you can get it cut now, then you're done for the winter.
Well, I don't know, when you, you mentioned complaints coming in, and then we would cut it at the last minute. I don't know if that's.
I'm not aware. I'm just saying now.
It's just what the note said on the person that called.
Could be just timing. Can we give this like a 30-day one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, get it cut 30 days, and then just go away. If it don't, we have to, because of rotis and stuff like that, we can't let it build up.
Understood. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. So, Mr. Slade is going to close the hearing?
Yes, sir. We'll close that hearing. I believe Mr. Gaines wishes to table this for 30 days to make sure that the grass is cut and the yard is cleaned up, and then we'll revisit the issue if not.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Slade.
Yes, item E is the Scott Purser nuisance property at 198 Andrew Chapel Road. This is District 4. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate for us.
All right, we received a complaint here about rubbish and debris and inoperable vehicles. Our first letter went out on June 3rd of 2018. It showed it was undelivered. But Mr. Purser got the mail because he came by the office yesterday. These pictures were taken June the 26th.
Put a match to it.
And then these were taken November 27th. There hadn't been any change in the condition of the property.
That hearing is open. I think Mr. Purser is present. If you have anything that you want to say to the board, you can come forward now.
He gets grass cut out there, but all the debris and stuff. I have a buddy of mine that's looking at coming to haul it all for me. I was hoping that he'd show up last night, and I guess he got busy and didn't make it back. But I'm going to call him today and see what's going on with that. And a lot of it's just construction debris, which, like I said, I'm going to get him to haul a lot of that off. But I just, I'm building that house by myself. I've been doing it for about two years now. So, I'm wrapping up on it, but still have a little bit to do. And I wasn't as worried about the outside until I got the house done, and then I was going to get the outside cleaned up and landscaped and all that. But I run my own business, and I'm building a house by myself, so my time is limited, but I'm working on it. So, I could have a couple months. I could get it all spruce back up.
Little 60 days.
Mr. Purser, for the record, you're Scott Purser at 198 Andrew Chapel Road. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming.
Mr. President, I think Mr. Gaines' motion would be to table for 60 days. Oh, close the public hearing. Thank you. Table for 60 days, revisit the issue, make sure it has been addressed.
Mr. Gaines, to that effect, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Anything else to the Planning Commission, Ms. Renee?
No, sir.
Anything else to the Planning Commission?
I just have one, I have this update. What's the, two things really. One on Fury Road, where the new one in, got the old one there, still there, that they're cleaning, they're moving stuff out of it.
The elder.
Actually, more like, yeah, Fury Road, yeah.
The elderly couple?
Right.
That got a proof of one. I'll just have to check back with them.
I mean, I'm getting people asking now.
Okay.
I went by the day, doors wide open on it. Didn't look like anything being done, like there's empty hole there.
All right.
Surely, they had it figured in to be removed when they put the new one in.
I'm not sure, but she said that it would be moved. They were just trying to get their stuff out, so, yeah. It's been a while. I'll check that with her.
And one other thing, what about the update on the cell, I'm not, Wells property on Pearson?
What are you talking about, Kenneth?
That's the worst one, yeah.
That's the old dirt pit. No.
No.
Right. He's been, been to jail for this issue.
That was the latest.
We're supposed to get it torn down. I mean, it just needs to be gone. I mean, we know that. And then the brother died, and they moved most of those cars, but they're still, everybody rides by there, so you're just constantly getting what's going on with it, what's going on with it, how much longer, can't y'all do anything? So, where are we?
Kenneth is living in the bus station in Jackson. He, well, you know, he's real hard to find.
Well, he can't tear it. He ain't going to tear it down. So, what are we going to do with it? How many acres is it?
Probably between the two and acre, maybe. The other one plays his place. Everything about it is tied up in court.
Yeah.
Uh, he probably had a hundred vehicles there.
Yeah.
Along to whom, you know?
Yeah.
That's going to be a mess, that piece property, just because it's in court.
Well, that one, if the other one was cleaned up, I think it would pretty much e, end a lot of it, because that one is obviously a situation that dude died and, you know, it's kind of hard. And, and she has done a lot to get it cleaned up now.
She has, she got put on hold, she can't do anything else to it, she spent a lot of money on the house. And then the heirs begin to show up, so.
Oh, yeah.
So, so did Wells pass them on?
Yes. Did.
Okay. So it's, it's now an estate proceeding somewhere?
Somewhere.
But Kenneth, is that, is that in the same thing?
No, that's a total difference, he's property.
What I thought.
Like I said, he, he's homeless, he lives at the bus station.
I mean, you can't even live in this thing, I mean, nobody can live in it.
If it's declared, if it's a, it's a public health hazard, just declare it and take it down.
Yeah. Five point, Rick. Uh, nothing about being in an estate proceeding, uh, would inhibit the county from taking action under our public health, safety and welfare police authority. Uh, if the board is of a mind to, you can declare a nuisance and seek to have it mediated yourself and apply the laws to clean up, that's a lien against the property. And eventually you'll hit that back.
Somebody's paying the taxes on it.
It's already been declared a nuisance and it's, it's been at Justice Court, but I'm not sure what the latest is on that part, when he was coming back.
It's been a nuisance for eight years.
Oh, I know. I think since I've been here, we've had Mr. Pless, when he was alive, at least three times, so no Kenneth's been up here.
He, he's not right, I understand that, I feel for that, but, I mean, I understand, but still, somebody's got to do, we got to do something with it.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be, I'm solely out of the furnace of caution, I realize we've already declared a nuisance, but let's get it back in front of us one more time with an official notice. And let, let's let you guys consider what you want, let me take care of both of them, yourself, I think you can give it a better price.
We can't do both of them? Even if they're in a state? I don't know if the other one's that bad, though.
If it's got inoperable vehicles.
Oh, we could clean that up, but we, I don't know, I'm not saying tear that house down.
Yeah, now the house, the house would be okay, but the vehicles that are stacked up around it, you know, that may be.
Yeah. I would make clean that up, yeah, I'm not, I'm talking like tear the other one, to get it gone and then clean up around, okay, I'm good with that.
But we can get them both back in front of you guys with an official notice and then let y'all make the decision, you'll take each of those.
Okay.
But on Kenneth, we know that we're going to ask if you're ever going to do cleanup work, if you take the house down and clean up any other, clean all the debris up and take care of any other nuisance considerations that may be there. And on the estate side, the Pless side, we would just instruct if they remove inoperable vehicles and whatever else, but don't mess with the house.
Right, okay, I'm good, all right, then, there you go, I'd like you to do that then, okay, that's all. All right, move on, Bob.
All right, uh, sir, motion to, uh, adjourn to January third, two thousand nineteen at nine AM. Second, Mr. Morris, any discussion? Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Will not convene and call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for October, November twenty-ninth, uh, two thousand eighteen. Public comments, Miss Janus.
Pictures.
Mr. Schley, you have anything?
I don't have anything on the phone on this.
Or mail, some stuff, can't believe.
Uh, Ms. Oster. Gentlemen, if y'all have a chance to look at it, I know Jay had, but anybody else have a chance?
Ah, you're so funny.
Am I correct? Am I correct?
Looked at it last night.
Am I correct?
Very much, you're not correct.
All right, we'll move on then to additional business, I'd ask if anybody, unless somebody's got any comments on the agendas. All right, Ms. Oster, we'll move on to additional business.
Uh, first thing we have, I believe, um, Mr. Parker's going to take that one, it's the Andrew, Andrew Chapel Road Bridge.
And I did get good night's sleep the last, next two nights, I did, I slept a night, I did.
You do what?
Thanks, thanks to who?
You see my smart ass.
Oh, yeah.
I got some good sleep.
I'm glad, I was glad I could help you out there, Bob.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you, sir, uh, each of you should have a copy of the bid tabulation in front of you on Andrew Chapel. And, uh, we would recommend the board that contact the Joe McGee Construction Company, Inc.
Out of curiosity, there's a two hundred dollar difference between them and Southern Rock, and Southern Rock's actually the lowest bid, what's the, the reason?
Really? Say that one with that, I didn't know that.
Am I reading that, reading it right? Look, I look at it, uh, Joe McGee's at one, one two nine five two three and Southern Rock's at one two one nine three seven three.
That's ninety thousand dollars high.
Am I not doing it right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, hello, yes, I'm, gosh, my mind is shot.
Don't be reading.
Yeah.
A good night's sleep's overrated.
All right, I'll shut up. I need more sleep, very good, very good, I opened up. Are you leaving that, Mr. Gaines?
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Gaines to approve, second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries, all right, next, Ms. Oster.
Authority pays registration fees and lodging, that amount of four forty per relationship commissioner, that's Tanya Rivers, Leslie Lewis, Kelly Wiggins, Eric Baumann, and Dean Scott, that's in there, in the certification on the coast of January twenty-second through the twenty-fifth, and take any travel related expenses.
Twenty-second through the twenty-fifth.
Of January.
All right. I'll make my second.
I'll make my first, bro.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Morris, and second by Mr. Bishop, to approve, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
There, there was some concern about an additional day I saw on there.
That's because I traveled down the night before.
You what?
Travelled down the night before, be there in the morning, could be.
What time?
What time's the class start, do we know?
No, I don't, it just says, you know, that substantial day.
I'm fine with it.
Tell them be economical, please.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Anything else for additional business, Ms. Oster?
Not under additional business, I'm sorry.
Mr. Schley, anything for additional business? Board, anything else for additional business? Jay, Steve? Anything else for additional business? Anything else, or need for executive session?
I thought we were coming out.
I'll entertain a motion by someone to discuss the need by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morris, and all in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. A motion to go into executive session for the need to discuss personnel and litigation. Second, uh, motion, Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morris, and any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. For those not involved, please depart.